Well, good afternoon. Today is November 3rd, 2025. This is the 3 o'clock PM meeting of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. We have a good roomful of folks today, smiling faces. Good to see you. We're glad you're with us. We're going to begin our meeting as we always do. It's been our tradition that we'll start off. We'll have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, come forward. He's our sheriff chaplain. And so he'll come forward. We're going to have what's called a solemnizing prayer. We always define that. That's a prayer for the commissioners. You know, we're kind of little different politicians. We actually understand that we don't know everything. So we rely not so much on knowledge but wisdom. And so we ask our chaplain to come forward and do... He does some other things, but we always ask him to pray for wisdom for us that we make the best decision that is possible to us for the folks of Rowan County. And that's what we're going to ask him to do again today. And we appreciate you being here, chaplain. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. You provided for us, Lord. And we thank for our county commissioners that we come to this meeting today. We know there's been a lot of preparation made for this meeting, dear Lord, because our county commissioners are always working for us to have a better county, dear Lord. Will you be with them tonight, direct them toward the right directions? We thank for this time we've had together in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Mike, glad you're here safely. Thank you. All right, I have one addition, and we will add our leadership development program graduation is today, so we're going to add that to the first item. So I know we have item A is road name changes. We'll make this item, I don't know, A, change road name to AA or something. But we'll do... Unless you all wanted to stay for the whole meeting. We've got a huge agenda. We'll be out around midnight, y'all. No? Okay. I gave you the choice. All right, we'll put them on first. Any other additions or deletions, commissioners? All right, hearing none? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
No move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is before us. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And let's see, public comment. Cynthia Moore Stanfield, welcome. Glad you're here.
Hello to everyone. My name is Cynthia Moore Stanfield. When I was here at the September the 2nd meeting, and I'm trying to remember the timeframe, I gave a history, my history of being a retired social studies teacher who loves history. And to everyone here, I still love history. Okay, I told a very passionate story of an unmarked cemetery and through my research have been added to the North Carolina Registry of Historical Cemetery. And I asked if someone in Rowan County could write a grant for a historical marker since I don't meet the qualifications. I'm not a 501(c), I'm not a nonprofit, and I'm not a government entity. I'm just a retired social studies teacher that loves history. And through this, I've heard nothing from Rowan County, but what I gained is public support, many phone calls. I got two letters of recommendation. I got an article written in the Salisbury Post, and I have it, former social studies teacher working to get historical markers placed on unmarked cemeteries. So after today, and I always told my students to think big, to have big dreams. So I started thinking, maybe this historical marker is a little bit too big for Rowan County, and maybe I should take it to a larger county for support. So to tell the story, I worked with the research, and maybe a philanthropist would pick it up, and I won't even have to have a grant written at all. So I've already picked the news station and the reporter and Charlotte Mecklenburg to cover my story, and that's why I'm here today. This is my final attempt to get help from Rowan County because I'm thinking big thoughts and big dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no other public speaker, so we'll move on to our first item, which is the leadership development program graduation. Aaron, you want to kick us off?
We'll start off with a presentation from Wes Thompson, and then we'll have... We'll call each everybody's name and come up and receive your...
All right, Wes.
Again, my name is Wes Thompson. I've been chosen to present my speech that was voted on by my classmates in this program to you guys today, ladies. And I wrote this for them, so I'm presenting to you guys, so kind of keep that in mind as we go. About 12 o'clock, I texted my father. I said, "Hey, all the times you let me park in your spot over here on a Friday, I think it's worth you coming over and getting to see how I turned out." Notice I didn't say how good I turned out. I just said how I turned out. He's a very successful man, and I thought that he could share this opportunity with us today. And so the speech was about the program, starting January, went through September. And every Friday, every last Friday of the month, it was a great opportunity, and I just wanted to share a few thoughts with that. I chose to talk about the spirit of the class versus the intricate details of the class and what the opportunity meant to me and I hope my classmates as well. So here we go. I was 20 years old. I was at Catawba College. I was working a job. I bought a house. Everything was going great, working for a company since I was 16, a lot of promises. The youngest one to ever go to a Fremont, Nebraska plant to help with an inventory process. I felt honored, thought that would be where I would spend my career. And that turned out not to be the case. Last year at Catawba College, I found that job taken from me unexpectedly, and found myself sitting in front of a man named Rick Rodenhour. Rick Rodenhour was in charge of building and grounds for the county at the time, and he asked me one question that I remember, asked me several questions actually, but one question I do remember. "And where do you see yourself in five years?" Very popular interview question. And I didn't want to give a common answer. I just said, "I want to be with an organization that I can grow with," and whether it be here or whether it be somewhere else. And that was being fair with him and an honest answer. And he thanked me for that. So that was 24 years ago. They hired me to cut grass as a college student, 20 years old, on the lawn crew for Rowan County. And so the next three years, that was school, that was facing a girl, and cutting grass. So as the previous job left me, so did the girl. She was not the one that I'd been married to for 21 years. I am happily been married for 21 years, but to someone else. The Lord had a different one in mind for me. And a job came up in at the tax office, and I come in on a very entry level. And I was a part-time benefited deed career. Thought that was a good opportunity to stay with the county and see where that led. I was young. I had some past management at the time that was... Looking back now, I could see 2020s of hindsight to say that that was... Needless to say, my director is here today, Chip Main, and I'm so glad for him because I've learned so much from him in the past five years that he's been here more than the 20 years before. So needless to say, I was wondering about my tenure. I found myself taking minimal CE classes just to keep our certifications, not a lot of growth opportunities. Found myself sitting in interviews with other counties, multiple interviews in other counties. Nothing ever felt right. Nothing ever felt right. Obviously, I did not take one of those positions. And so just outlasted the old guard, if anybody understands that statement. And moving along to a forward thinking, board members like yourself, this past however many years that this group's been together, got no reason to teach your own horns here, but I'm going to, and it's been a progress in this county that's been refreshing. Programs like this Rowan County Leadership Development Program that we were able to take, performed, the program itself, from the processes to the problem solving, to the programs that we were able to listen to on a monthly basis, were great. I do three things. I do a good, better, best. But some were good, some were better, and some were the best. Some left you wanting a little bit more, and some were something you went home and talked to your spouse about that night. So we have a relatively small department. If you can correct me if I'm wrong, 21, 22 people. And the opportunity to come out and meet some of my classmates here in this program, I think, was the most beneficial to me, to understand the thought process, to see what the other departments do, to see how they work, to see how they grow. It's been amazing. I hope that they would agree that that was a great opportunity to be... There's someone I never would have met. I don't think we have anybody beating the door down at the tax office to come and hang out. So it was a great opportunity to meet these folks. I've considered some of them my friends now that I did not know before. Just an awesome time. And now I have three kids, been married 21 years, got one in seminary school, another one in high school, another one in middle school. Life is always changing, and it's unpredictable. The who can change, the where can change, and the constant with me in the past 24 years has been Rowan County and the opportunity to be employed here. And I kind of sum it up with this, all those times where it seemed like we were going in the wrong direction or had a manager that I didn't really mesh with, all the interviews I had at other counties, I'm glad I stayed. And I appreciate the opportunity that you guys provide for us with this class and to see the value and the worth within the walls of our departments to rise up as leaders. And we want to make you proud on that. Thank you.
You know, the quality of organization really begins with the quality of leadership. I can remember just a few years ago, we reached out to Aaron and said, "Aaron, you know, we won't be around forever. I think the best thing that we could do for you and folks at Rowan County is to help you in your leadership and in your continuing education." So this group came together, and we began to send Aaron out to get advanced training and leadership, and you can see what it's done for this community, you can see what it's done for that office. We really value Aaron Church as a great leader. We trust him implicitly. It's a great relationship we have with him. He's a smart guy. He doesn't want you to think that, right? But we appreciate him, and this was his idea to do, and so we wholeheartedly agree with this because we want our departments to have great leadership as well because it pours down through the whole organization. So thank you for putting yourself out there to be part of this leadership development program. It's a big deal. It's a big deal for our community, for the county. And so you own the right to a great congratulations. So Aaron, why don't I give this... You can stay up here. We're going to take one group picture afterward. Heather Garrison.
I know. Basically, I learned how to deal with everybody, to have different...
Theodore Clayton. Jeremy Cruz. Taylor Edwards. Matthew Inlow.
I just want to say that I have no envy for you guys having to make budget decisions. Our little examples we had to do there is very tough.
Leslie Fossey. Congratulations.
Thank you for this opportunity. I think the biggest thing I took away from the class was understanding myself and my team a little bit better.
Robert Hartzell.
Thank you, everybody. We grow and become leaders once...
Heather Hewitt.
I learned that you guys like to step outside of our comfort zones, and that we can always fly on each other's...
Nina Durf.
So I think what I learned of my being able to work together and having somebody to always rely on others, brainstorming to help with all the other divisions on it.
Angel Crowder. Congratulations.
One thing I've learned in this class was to empower others to their full potential.
Amanda Martin.
I learned there are lots of different leadership styles, and it takes a mix of those to make any...
Kelly Miller.
I think that we all enjoyed motivating each other during... How we treat others seems more than...
Bethany Perez. Sasha Raven.
I definitely would like to say the most, I would say my favorite part of everything, the fact that I came to this class and I probably made it, and now I'm...
William Ray. Natalie Rivers.
I would say the most important thing that I enjoyed about the class, of course, being a Rowan County resident and working for the county, you think you know a lot about the county. So I do appreciate that they prepared us with the different departments and showing that understanding of the inner workings to give you that better foundation for advanced leadership. And leaving here with all of these friends, so now I know if I get stopped, I can call somebody. No, just kidding. But I do have gained a lot of friends and colleagues in other departments, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dog. Then you get a ticket. Rachel Ruggles.
So the one thing that I learned the most is that shark repellent apparently is not as important if you're stranded in the middle of the ocean as I thought it was, because I thought it was number one, and nobody agreed with it. So... But what you learned is that you're as strong as your weakest link, so you want to make sure that your weakest link is as strong as you are.
Jonathan Russell.
Yeah, like everybody else, that teamwork, I think, is the biggest thing that I've taken away from the uniqueness of the experts that we have in all the different departments that we have here.
Carrie Shaw.
What I learned, one wild card was in the financial piece, I did not realize that the money follows the student. That was just a shock to me, that if they leave Rowan County, the money goes with them. So I was shocked by that. And then what I'm taking away from the class is, as a leader, we have to be adaptable. We're a sponge. We're constantly learning and absorbing and being able to use those skills wherever we are.
Tanya Stevens.
What I learned was that I'm thankful that...
Sawyer Strickland.
My biggest takeaway is growing as a leader is definitely not...
Joshua Stutz.
I was able to see parts of the county that I've not been able to see before, and I learned that we have a terrible amount of... Different areas...
Already spoke.
See, the main thing I took out of the class is I have a much better understanding of my strengths and weaknesses as far as leadership. One thing I didn't expect, meet so many new people that I really enjoy meeting, I was hoping that I'd be doing to have a relationship with everybody.
Body. Okay, now, Bruce. All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Pam, welcome. Thanks for being here.
I have three petitions for you today. Okay, full screen. So I have three today. Do you want me to just present all of them and then you hold one? Okay. So two of the three, the first two I'll go over, they were actually petitioned due to new homes being added to the driveway. Once that second home is established, anything after that, you have to name the driveway for 911 purposes. So the first one is off of Ben Road. And the name that they proposed that was approved is Wonder Wall Lane. There's already three structures there, and they're planning on building one more house. The next one is, that was approved, was the name they submitted, was Muddy Deep Trail. That was approved by 911 and signed off by all the homeowners. The final one, it was just a request. There's only two homes going in, which doesn't necessarily meet the criteria, but it's off of Moore'sville Road. And if you'll see the two homes, the homes that are there on either side, there's not but one number available. This is the odd side. So we only had 5107 available. So we got together, the committee, and decided that it would be best to name that driveway rather than to let, have some of the established residents have to change their address. And so that's what we, how we went about this one. And the name that they came up with was Progress Place, and that was approved as well. That's my three requests.
All right, any questions, Pam? All right, if not, then we will have a public hearing on this. Open the floor. If anyone wants to discuss this publicly, any of these three address names. Seeing none, we'll close. And we have a motion to approve these three road name changes.
I move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have some board appointments. On JCPC, we have a motion to remove Shabon Allen as the county administrator, manager, administrator, JCPC. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion to add Rebecca Salibi in the same position.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a few of them here. Adult Home Care Advisory Committee, Committee. Your brother applied. There are 17 vacancies. We also have, it looks like Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Elizabeth Ann Foreman applied. And then Therapeutic Recreation Board, Ashley Hornberry and Lori Sinkamani applied. There are plenty of vacancies for those. Do we have a motion and a second to approve all of those? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's see here. Then we have a closed session scheduled. The board is asked to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A1. Consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on October 6th. And pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3 to consult with an attorney. And pursuant to 31811A5 to consider real estate negotiations. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As soon as we clear the room, then we'll get started on closed session. All right, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, be safe.